All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education's Business Meeting this Thursday, August 21st, 2025. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any questions on the agenda items? Okay, we'll get straight to business. Be it resolved that the following items be approved: B-1A through B-1N. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Be it resolved that the following items be approved: B-2A through B-2CC.
Motion.
Sorry, just going through. Motion made by Julia Burgos. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Be it resolved that the following items be approved: C-1A and C-1B. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D-1A: Appointments, Resignations, and Leaves. Certificated Personnel. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Certificated Personnel Action Report contained in the Board Packet for the August 21st, 2025 Board Meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? So moved. D-1B: Appointments, Resignations, and Leaves. Non-Certificated Personnel. I need a motion to amend.
Motion.
I'm amending number 75 to include David Estevez as School Transportation Coordinator. Motion. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Eileen Harmon. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D-1B: Appointed Resignations and Leaves. Non-Certificated Personnel. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Non-Certificated Personnel Action Report contained in the Board Packet for the August 21st, 2025 Board Meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Do you want to say something before we go to D-1C?
Before we go to D-1C, good evening, everyone. And I just want to introduce a wonderful student, a senior of ours. Guevara, Guevara, can you please stand up? So you're going to see that beautiful smile here now every month. You will see that, and she will be sitting right next to me. We already have your name engraved on a nameplate. And for those of you who do not know Jalen, let me just read a few things. And la mama esta aí, verdad? Felicidades, señora, felicidades. Okay, so tonight, as I said, I have the honor to introduce you, Jalen Guevara, who will serve as our ex-official student member on the Board of Education. Jalen is a proud Brentwood senior whose journey began with us all the way back in UPK. Over the years, she has grown into a leader, an advocate, and a voice for her peers. She currently serves as a senior class president, is part of the Junior ROTC, and leads as the Director of Brentwood Votes, where she advocates for underrepresented communities on issues like immigration and legislation. Her leadership extends beyond school walls. Last summers, she organized a back-to-school drive that provided more than 1,000 book bags for Brentwood students. Through the ROTC, she also has dedicated over 500 hours to service, supporting blood drive, food drive, and countless community events. Her work has not only given back to others, but she has also built her skills in leadership, teamwork, and discipline. Jalen's passion is advocacy. She dreams on becoming a lawyer, Candace, she's gonna be just like you, working in our nation's capital and eventually building a nonprofit organization to empower underserved communities. She says what excites her most about serving on the Board is providing a seat at the table for her peers. Okay, thank you, thank you. When you speak with Jalen, you immediately notice her determination, her compassion, and her pride in her Brentwood roots. She often says that she values most, what she values most about Brentwood are the bonds that she has formed with her teachers, relationships that, in her words, "have lasted from middle school all the way through her senior year." And if you know Jalen, as I mentioned before, you also know that she always laugh, and she's always smiling, and she's full of energy and joy. We can't wait to welcome you here, and congratulations for this wonderful moment.
So I also wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. Estevez on his appointment as our School Transportation Coordinator. We look forward to all that's to come, and welcome to our Brentwood family. Okay, so now we're gonna make it official, Jalen. D-1C, Appointing Student Member to the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 School Year. Whereas, in accordance with Education Law Section 1702 and the provisions of the Brentwood Union Free School District Policy 2245, ex-official student member of the Board, the Board of Education shall appoint a student member to serve in an ex-official, non-voting capacity during the school year. And whereas, the Brentwood Union Free School District values student voice and recognizes the importance of including student perspectives in district governance. And whereas, Jalen Guevara has been duly selected to serve as the ex-official student member of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 School Year, having met the eligibility requirements set forth in Policy 2245, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Brentwood Union Free School District hereby appoints Jalen Guevara to serve as the student member of the Board of Education in an advisory and non-voting capacity for the period commencing July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. And be it further resolved that the duties, limitations, and privileges of the ex-official student member shall be in accordance with the provisions of Policy 2245 and applicable New York State education law. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Congratulations, Jalen. D-1D, Principal Appointment. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Deshauna Doolin is appointed as principal at Brentwood High School in the secondary principal tenure area effective August 21st, 2025, at a rate of compensation and negotiated with the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization. And be it further resolved that in the, be resolved that in that 50% or more of the duties of the principal at Brentwood High School will be performed by the co-principal, the tenure and seniority rights earned by Deshauna Doolin as co-principal will be carried into the principal position, thereby affording Deshauna Doolin tenure and seniority in the position of principal at Brentwood High School in the secondary principal tenure area. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? So moved. Congratulations, Deshauna. So, some people may be confused by what just happened. So previously, Ms. Doolin, Dr. Doolin, was the co-principal of the high school. And this resolution appoints her as the sole principal of Brentwood High School. D-1E, Associate Principal Appointment. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Acting Principal Assistant Principal James Gesick is appointed as Associate Principal of Brentwood High School in the Associate Principal tenure area effective August 21st, 2025, at a rate of compensation as negotiated with the Principals, Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization. And be it further resolved that in that 50% or more of the duties of the Associate Principal at the Brentwood High School will be performed by the Acting Principal Assistant Principal, the tenure and seniority rights earned by James Gesick as Acting Principal Assistant Principal will be carried into the Associate Principal position, thereby affording James Gesick tenure and seniority in the position of Associate Principal at Brentwood High School in the Associate Principal tenure area. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Safari. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D-1F, Administrative Table of Organization, Assistant Coordinator of Special Services. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Jessica Castoro as Assistant Coordinator of Special Services for a four-year probationary period effective September 22nd, 2025 through September 1st, 2029, at a salary set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, BIPSO. 22nd. I'm sorry, September 2nd through September 1st, 2029, at a salary set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, BIPSO. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Julia Burgos, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Congratulations, Jessica. D-1G, Settlement Agreement and General Release. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of Brentwood Union Free School District, having received and reviewed a settlement agreement and general release concerning an instructional employee known to the Board, hereby approves such settlement agreement and general release and authorizes and directs the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education President to execute such settlement agreement on behalf of the Board. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D-1H, Last Chance Agreement. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves a last chance agreement dated August 21st, 2025, between a certain staff member, Local 237, city employees, Union International, Brotherhood of Teamsters, and the Board of Education of the Brentwood Union Free School District, and that the President of the Board of Education is authorized to execute the last chance agreement on behalf of the district. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hassan Ahmed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D-1I, Request for Legal Defense. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following. Whereas, in accordance with Education Law Section 3811 and/or Public Officers Law Section 18, as well as under any other applicable legal or insurance policy provisions, former employee Richard Loschner and current employee Katie Lasky and Board members Eileen Felix, Cynthia Safari, Julia Burgos, Hassan Ahmed, Maria Malave, Brandon Garcia, and Eileen Harmon collectively Brentwood UFSD have submitted timely written requests for legal defense and indemnification regarding an action titled, William King Moss III, plaintiff, against the Board of Education of the Brentwood Union Free School District, the Brentwood Union Free School District, and both individually and in their official capacities, Eileen Felix, Cynthia Safari, Julia Burgos, Hassan Ahmed, Maria Malave, Brandon Garcia, Eileen Harmon, Richard Loschner, and Katie Lasky defendants, docket number 24-CV-08759. Whereas, there are allegations in the above-mentioned legal action arising from the performance of Brentwood UFSD's exercise of their official duties and responsibilities. And whereas, Brentwood UFSD does not waive any rights that it may have to challenge any aspect of this legal action, including, but not limited to, improper service of the legal action. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby designates a law firm, designated by NYSER, to represent Brentwood UFSD in the above-mentioned legal action. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Eileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D-1J, Resolution Regarding the Court's Dismissal of Mr. Moss's Court Action. Whereas, Mr. William King Moss III brought in action a New York State Court, index number 630430-2024, against the Brentwood Union Free School District and other defendants, in which Mr. Moss alleged that the district and other defendants engaged in discrimination and retaliation against him on the base of race, color, national origin, and sex. And whereas, the court considered Mr. Moss's allegations and ordered that Mr. Moss's claims be dismissed. And whereas, the court also ordered that Mr. Moss reimburse defendants for the cost and reasonable attorney's fees that were incurred in connection with the drafting and filing of their motion to dismiss, based upon the court's determination that Mr. Moss engaged in frivolous conduct by initiating this legal action. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Brentwood Union Free School District hereby accepts the court's determination to dismiss Mr. Moss's claims and the court's order for Mr. Moss to reimburse defendants. I need a motion.
Motion.
Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? So moved. Okay, E-1A, Student Enrollment Figures, none at this time. F-1 through 2, miscellaneous items for information only. We have Board Action Memos and ELT meeting minutes for June 13th, 2025. We're gonna begin our public comment portion of this evening's meeting. And just a reminder, each individual will have only three minutes to address the Board of Education. Okay, I don't have a name on this, but the individual lives on Stein Drive and wants to discuss the bleachers that were just put up. Okay, can we just move the microphone back a little?
Bring it right up.
Thank you. And Jim, going forward, let's just make sure that's where it's positioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everybody.
Hello, good evening. If you could just state your name.
Yeah, my name is Rosa Lopez. I thought I put it on the form.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Okay.
My family has owned our home for 52 years. My property abuts the Brentwood High School field. Without any, without any notice, bleachers were put up feet from the back of my fence. When we bought the house, we had only the view of the field, which is great. No one had a view like ours, especially in the winter time. Needless to say, that my privacy will now be compromised. I have the right of quiet enjoyment of my home. I know I have that right. The quality of life will be diminished, and most importantly, the value of my home will be decreased. Because nobody, nobody wants to buy a house that has bleachers in the back. Not only bleachers, but the announcement booth is up high, directly in the back of my yard, and it looks onto my bathroom windows. This proves to me that the person or group that decided to place bleachers directly behind my home believes that I do not matter and are counting that no one will complain. This is such a blatant lack of caring and disrespect for me and my home. When we bought this house, those bleachers were not there. Now going south, there are bleachers, but those bleachers have been there for more than 52 years. So whoever is in those homes, accepted those bleachers or bought the house when the bleachers were there. I, I just feel like, 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 no one wants me, it's like, no one expects me to complain. This is my home. For 52 years, my family has owned this property. And I look onto bleachers, no view now, and I have an announcement booth that looks onto my bathroom. And respectfully, I'm telling you these feelings.
Thank you so much.
Now, I'm sorry, I'm not an architect, nor am I a bleacher designer. But they couldn't find another place to put those bleachers in the back of two homes that had been there for almost half a century.
We had, I'm sorry that you're going through that right now, but we-
I'm sorry too.
No, 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 but we had an architect that actually worked on this plan, and Miss Stacy O'Connor can explain the process in order for us to be able to install the bleachers and the press box.
On the west side of the field. Why couldn't I put them on the east side of the field? Which would be right on the side of this field- Which would be right on the side of this building. And the thing, I'm sorry, but the thing that I object to was I had no notice, nothing zilch. When they started to put those bleachers up probably about two weeks ago, I was shocked. And I just want to mention that I live next door to a lot. And I don't have a privacy fence. You know why? Because I want to know what's happening in the field.
I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off. Three minutes are up.
Okay, but the safety, because people do stuff in that lot and people do stuff in the field. I have had to call 911. I will be put, I had financial hardship, I will be putting up a privacy fence. So if they leave those bleachers, they're going, everyone's going to have privacy.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
If I could just ask, Ms. Lopez, I'm not sure if this was previously brought to the attention of the district. If you could leave your contact information with the district clerk, I'm sure someone will follow up with you.
I left it on the form.
Thank you.
Okay, my address and my phone number is there.
I appreciate it.
But that's how I feel, and I think it was just a lack of disrespect to me and my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Schroder.
Good evening, I'm Ken Schroder. I'm a retired teacher from the district. And I was watching February 13th's board meeting, and there was a woman, Anna, came in and started asking about Section D on how do we find out? And the answer was, you go ahead and you can foil things. I did some investigation on Anna's stuff. I'm not sure if she's watching. But there are some interesting things that I've been looking up. There are a couple of things in state of New York. State of New York has what people call licensed social workers, licensed psychologists, and there's also unlicensed. But New York State Education Department certifies people based on education only, not whether they have a license or not. So one of the problems that happens in this district is we have people who are not licensed working in a position that needs a license. And I've been told differently, that you really don't need. But those people who don't have the license cannot do the work of a social worker. They can only do with simple amounts. They can only do, the social workers and psychologists that are unlicensed can only do group work. They cannot do individual work with any students. So one of the things that happened, there was two people on the list today that I know of, and I've checked their names out. They're not licensed. They're unlicensed social workers handling students with issues, and they can't do anything about it. They can only do group work. They cannot do anything that has direct contact with the individuals on their own. They cannot give them any advice for anything. The two social workers that are getting increases, they are not licensed psychologists. They do not have a degree in psychology. One of the things that has to happen with New York State is you need to have a degree and a doctorate. So you have to have a doctorate to be a psychologist in the state of New York. One of the people, again, I want to go back to is that if you've lived in this district for a while, you know that nepotism and hiring friends does not work. And one of the problems that happened is when I was still working here, we had superintendents that were released and paid out hundreds of thousands of dollars because they couldn't complete the job because they were friends of other people. I don't think we need to hire people who are friends or even family members if they have the job and they can handle it. Okay, one of the people happened to be Rhonda's daughter, assistant superintendent. She is not licensed. I looked it up this morning, she's not licensed.
Excuse me, sir?
She may be certified.
Sir, I'm sorry. If we could refrain from referring to particular individuals.
Well, they're on the list. They're in Section D. You guys approved her today.
But this is not specific to you. This is something that we say at each board meeting.
That's fine. But we need to look at the list. And Anna had questioned social workers when she was back here in February, and that's why I came. Because the thing is, is that we have individuals that should not be in those positions. If you want to be a hairdresser, you want to do nails, you want to be a barber, you want to do real estate, you want to own a pet cemetery, you need a license in New York to do those jobs. Right now, in New York State Education Department, you don't need a license to do social work and psychology.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schroder, your time is up.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the folks at home? Or anyone else in the audience? So, Ms. Lopez, before I close the meeting, I just want to say it's never the district's intention to disrespect you, your family, or your home. It's our intention always to do what's best in what's in the best interest for our students, our community. And it's not intentional. It wasn't, you know, something that was malicious intent. We understand why you're upset. We will call you. We will try to find an amicable resolution as best we can. But as you can see, we're just trying to beautify our grounds, make this a place that all of us can be proud of. And so, you know. Quickly, yes.
I understand what you just said. For 52 years, we have seen the kids play sports behind, behind my house. Not a complaint. Because we would rather have students on that field doing sports than on the street.
Absolutely.
Okay? Renovating the field is great. But why am I being the sacrificial goat? That I have to give up my privacy and my own own?
Thank you.
You know, there's got to be a better solution.
Well, we'll try to find one. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'm sorry, Rhonda, oh my gosh. That's right.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you.
Rhonda, all the new business?
Sure. Thirty more days for us to receive our wonderful students. I'm counting.
I'm counting.
And 12 days we're going to receive our teachers here. I thought that it would be great for us to show a video of the things that happened here during the summit and celebrate all the great things that has happened here. This is going to be Jayling's job, I have to tell you. So today's my last day in this year, right? I guess. But can you go ahead and let's show this wonderful video?